Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us for City Council Bill Number 20-0486, Private Security Camera System Rebate Program Establishment. We are joined here by my Vice Chair, Councilman Chris Burnett, the Bill Sponsor, Councilman Costello, Councilman Pinkett, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Cohn, and Richard Staff to the Committee. We're also joined by a couple Members of the Mayor's Office. Sonny Schnitzer, Deputy Chief of Staff, Bob Senemi from the Budget Office, Nina from the Mayor's Office, Elena DePietra from the Law Department, Michelle Wurzberger from the Police Department, and Drew Vaught from the Police Department. I will now give the Bill Sponsor an opportunity to introduce the bill and talk about it, and then we'll turn it over to the Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This bill is a rebate program for private security cameras. The way the bill is currently drafted, it would provide for a $150 rebate for each camera, up to two cameras per residential property and up to three cameras per commercial or business property. In order to be eligible for the rebate, the individual would have to purchase the camera after June 1st. They would have to provide the city proof of purchase for that camera after June 1st. They would then need to sign an agreement that that camera will be pointed at the public right-of-way for a period of no less than two years. Public right-of-way could be a street, an alley, a sidewalk, a park, anywhere that you can think of in the public where there is no reasonable expectation of privacy. In addition, that camera would require to be registered with the Baltimore City Police Department's CityWatch Community Partnership. By way of background, the CityWatch Community Partnership is not to be confused with the city's CityWatch Camera Network. CityWatch Community Partnership is a database that the Police Department maintains. It is a database of private security cameras in the city which are voluntarily registered with the Police Department. It includes a name, a phone number, an email address, and a physical address for the location of said camera. When BPD is investigating a crime, they can look in that database to determine if there are cameras in close proximity in order to aid in the investigation of that crime. For example, if there was a camera registered at 1 East Baltimore Street, right around the corner, and there was a crime at 3 East Baltimore Street, BPD could go into that database. They would note that the crime occurred at 3 and that there's a camera registered at 1. BPD would reach out to that property owner, one of their detectives, maybe over email, maybe over phone, maybe in person by knocking on the door when they're canvassing the neighborhood for other evidence. They would then request the footage that is retained by the owner of the camera. The owner of the camera can choose to provide that footage to BPD or they can choose not to. There is no requirement, and BPD does not have any avenue to, or mechanism, to legally compel that citizen from providing that information. So I do want to be clear that providing that camera footage is something that is voluntary, not mandatory. So while you would be required to register it with the CityWatch Community Partnership, that means that you would have to provide your name, your phone number, your email address, and the physical location of where that camera is located. But you would not be required to cooperate with police in an investigation. You would not be required to turn that camera footage over. I will also note that in my discussions with the President's Office in the last hour, it was brought to my attention the desire of the President's Office to introduce an amendment to this bill which would provide for a voucher for these cameras. And just again by background, the difference between a rebate and a voucher is that a rebate is provided after the fact, after you have met certain criteria. In this case, those criteria, as I just explained, proof of purchase after June 1st, signing an agreement to have that camera pointed at the right-of-way, and registering that with the online database with BPD. A voucher being different is something that is provided upfront prior to meeting certain criteria or conditions. And then presumably, you are required to meet certain conditions, and then you are in compliance and are not at risk of losing your voucher. Mechanically, I can only think of two ways that a voucher would be able to work for this type of program. That would either be the city providing $150 upfront to an individual with the promise that they will purchase the camera, install it, provide proof of purchase to the city, sign said agreement that they will point it at the right-of-way, and register it with the CityWatch Community Partnership, or to physically provide citizens or commercial property owners with the camera upfront. I certainly understand the intent of the desire for an amendment to that effect, and am more than willing and looking forward to working with the President's Office on the feasibility of such an amendment. I will be doing some research to see what other cities have employed a voucher for private security cameras. We know that other cities are using this, and it has been a very effective tool, not only as a deterrent for crime, but as an investigatory tool to help speed up investigations and close out investigations, not only for crimes, but for violent crime. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me the time to explain that. I'd like to finish off with two anecdotal examples, and I'm sure that others will come up during the course of this hearing. There was a young man who was murdered in my neighborhood back in September or October of 2018. I spent the evening with police in the neighborhood, canvassing residents' homes, had a number of individuals reach out who had video footage to offer, brought detectives to their houses to retrieve said footage. The footage in that case is what led detectives on the right path to help close out that murder, which led to an arrest and subsequent conviction of both of the individuals involved. The other, less anecdotal, but kind of broad-stroke-paint story that I would share is in the Patterson Park neighborhood. A man by the name of Arch McCown, who's been very active on this front, has helped build a residential network of approximately 500 cameras spread out amongst over 200 homes. And Arch and his neighbors, along with BPD, would agree wholeheartedly that that camera network has led to it being a deterrent to crime in their neighborhood, including violent crime. Crime statistics suggest that crime is down in that neighborhood, and furthermore, that it has aided in investigations resulting in arrests and convictions for crimes, including violent crimes in that neighborhood. Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I look forward to a robust discussion with you and our colleagues today.
Thank you. Drew, would you like to come up and?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Drew Vaught with the Baltimore Police Department. I'm the Managing Director over BPD's Data-Driven Strategies Division, which includes kind of oversight over the operations of CityWatch. I wanted to just kind of give a brief overview in terms of how having this legislation passed will kind of benefit BPD in our ability to have information at our fingertips. That's really a force multiplier for us to have quick turnarounds and investigatory follow-up leads. Just real quickly, though, before I begin, Councilman Costello, kind of give a brief overview about the registration to the Community Partnership Program. Right here is just kind of a still image of the website where you can go and register your camera, whether you're a homeowner, a business owner, or the like. And then, and currently right now, BPD has 780 CityWatch cameras that we monitor live feed, as well as 680 private cameras that have been registered through that Community Partnership. And we're hoping with the passing of this legislation that that will increase exponentially. So one of the things and one of the ways that this will really enable us to be, have a force multiplier will also kind of be lock and step in towards the technology advancements that we've been continuously improving on over the past year, year and a half. What you have right here is just a mobile application that every officer and detective will have at their fingertips through their departmentally-issued cellphone. It's GPS-enabled to the location of the specific individual. But then the officer and/or detective would have the ability to either search manually for the address or just hit, touch on the map. And what that does, among other things, is that it queries out any of the public or private cameras that we have knowledge of. And not only does it do that, but it also gives the owner the contact information, the address, phone number, and email in which they can be, those individuals can be reached. I put only public cameras that are currently federated within CityWatch up there for privacy purposes. But, you know, if it were a private camera and all of the documentation from that registration was completed, this application that we're looking to roll out in the next couple of weeks would allow our officers and detectives to have this information at their fingertips. With increased registration comes just more awareness and understanding about the different investigatory leads that could ultimately lead to a case closure. So I just wanted to kind of show visually how, yes, kind of at a very basic level, registration into the Community Partnership Program is extremely beneficial. But we are operationalizing that now, and it will be, the benefits of that would be immediate. So that's all I have in terms of just a quick rundown. But very glad to see this bill proposed, and I digress from there.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm Elena DePietra from the Baltimore City Law Department. I think you have my report. I'm not going to read the whole thing. The main issue that we have with the bill, which is very correctable, and I've offered amendments to correct the problem, is in a couple instances, there was a problem with delegating discretion to the director. Since it's legislative power, it can't be granted. The discretion to exercise that power has to remain with the council. So that means the council has to provide for guidelines for the director's decision-making. So if you look at my amendments on the last page of my report, I think you'll see that what I'm getting at with respect to correcting, giving the guidelines for exercise of that discretion. So that's, and there was a couple other minor, just sort of housekeeping-type amendments we proposed as well. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay. We're going to go through all the agencies, and then we'll ask any questions.
Hi, good afternoon. Bob Senemi, Budget Director for the City, representing the Department of Finance today. We have reviewed this bill, and no objection to the bill, just a couple of comments. On the cost, it's a pretty simple analysis. It's just the number of cameras times the number of participants we have. So our interest would be in making sure that we first pilot this and work out the kinks to make sure it works before we would expand it further. We think we could do a small pilot within existing resources in the city's budget in fiscal '20. But to do anything further, we'd have to consider in fiscal '21 and beyond. And of course, our interest would be in looking and see if there's grant funding availability before we would commit the general fund to it. But we do generally think it's a good program. It makes sense. We did do some research that was discussed about the program in DC, which seems to be helpful. And then one technical consideration. The bill designates the Department of Finance, or the Director of Finance specifically, as the one to receive, review, and approve the application. So, I mean, our role should be to send the rebate out. But it might be best to have the receipt of the application as it was designed in either BPD or MOCJ. Our, you know, our revenue collections generally does send rebates for kind of standard tax bills, but they don't generally collect a lot of supplementary material for programs like this. So that would just be more of a technical correction to make sure that that could happen. And besides that, no further objections.
Okay, thank you.
Sonny Schnitzer, Deputy Chief of Staff for Public Safety in Mayor Young's administration. Just very briefly, I want to say, you know, we enthusiastically support the bill. You know, I'll say candidly, one of the, probably the most common requests I get in my office, and I think across the BPD, and I would assume many of your offices as well, is a request for a camera. And, off the top of my head, the cost for a camera, just to be, you know, very blunt, is about $6,000. And that's for the hardware. And that doesn't include kind of the hardwiring, the infrastructure, things like this. This is an opportunity for us to kind of expand our network, to empower people, to empower our neighbors. And we're really excited about the opportunity for this.
Just one more, and then we're open up. Anybody here from the State's Attorney's Office? Nope. All right, we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sonny, question for you. Previous mention of grants. Have we, has MOCJ, has anyone taken a look at whether there are potentially some grants available? I know that we obviously have many, many, many needs that are coming on our budget, namely Kerwin and everything else that we need to fund. So I'm curious, have we looked at where there are potential grants available for this?
Thank you for your question. Yes, we have looked into that. There are several options, federal, state, you know, philanthropic options. Generally speaking, one-time technology costs for public safety are the easiest things to find grant funding for. Upon receiving the draft of the bill, we reviewed, and there were several options that came to mind for me. You know, I think to Director Senemi's point, you know, I think doing a pilot within city resources to kind of demonstrate and figure out, work out the kinks would give us the opportunity to, to then kind of demonstrate to a grant maker a need for a substantial investment in that.
And on that note also, I mean, when you're looking inside city government, I mean, in the city charter, confiscated assets are supposed to be benefiting the local communities in which those assets are confiscated. And so that might be a first place that you guys could look at. And that also falls under MOCJ.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I had a few questions that may or may not be able to be answered today, but I know we're going to have a few discussions on this. So whatever we can answer, we can either take offline or in work session. So fiscal impact was covered. So currently, what is, and I guess with this program, what happens if someone receives the rebate but then rescends the commitment to connecting to the network? Is that, I guess, is a finance question? If someone doesn't commit to the two years, then what happens? It sounds like a logistical nightmare, possibly. I think Costello hasn't answered.
I can answer. You can go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Burnett, that's a great question. First, just to, I just want to clarify, because I know you asked the question about if it's not connected to the network. I do want to reiterate that these cameras would not be connected to the city's network.
Yeah, I mean, the registration.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Section 14-9 of the bill does address this in terms of criminal penalties that are standard in most of the legislation that we do. So I'll defer to law here, but presumably, law could pursue action against anyone who's not in compliance here, right? But the language in 14-9 is pretty much the standard language that we deal with for anything related to environmental, health, et cetera. Several of the bills that we've dealt with.
It's our, it's our most common enforcement language. It doesn't allow for citations. You could write that in if you wanted to. But it would be just, you know, filing a claim against some violator.
So in this section, it indicates that they'd be guilty of a misdemeanor or a fine up to $1,000?
Yes. That's our standard. That's in almost all of our city ordinance. In fact, all of our city ordinances, especially police ordinances, have that as our standard penalties. Because before, before we were given authority to have civil penalties, that was the only type of penalty that was available for violation of a city code provision.
Okay. I mean, I think there should be some nuance there. But again, we don't have to have this full discussion here. The other, did you want me to keep to a certain number of questions, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, you can get another one.
The other, so I have a bunch of it. I'll bounce back and forth between my colleagues. The other question I had, and maybe this is addressed, but the current outreach method for a camera that is registered in the system, can you describe what that looks like? And I'll give, the concern I have is that if someone gets the rebate, they register for the program, an incident occurs, but they haven't called 911, is BPD going to knock on this person's door? And the reason I'm mentioning that as a concern is that I know that there are residents who already have concerns about calling 911, are very leery of the autonomy when you say, "I want to remain anonymous." And maybe if there's frankly someone on their block, they may not feel comfortable coming forward. Do you currently simply come out to that person's house if they are already registered without them actually calling it in or attempts to reach them anonymously?
Could you repeat the first half of the question?
Okay, so the concern is someone registers in the already-existing system unrelated to this bill, because it's just building on what we already have.
Just as an aside.
Correct. So if someone, if an incident occurs, is a detective going to knock on their door without them calling?
I cannot speak to the exact protocol that detectives specifically take. I mean, that's what happens right now. I mean, if there's an incident on the block, detectives go knocking on the doors and talking to people who have footage. Yeah, and that generally sounds like basic canvassing, not necessarily like precise, you know, "Hey, we know specifically that there is a camera at this specific location and time." I will absolutely outline a protocol, or the protocol, to you guys in terms of what detectives do. But I would imagine that they are cognizant and sensitive to individuals that may want to be anonymous. I mean, specifically why I only posted kind of the CityWatch cameras and not anybody that's already registered with the program is specifically because I'm cognizant of that reason. So, you know, I'm almost certain that, you know, BPD detectives are absolutely cognizant of that and take the appropriate steps necessary to ensure.
Yeah, and there may be a need to revisit this internally, because I know for sure I've gotten people, and I'm sure all of us have, had people say, "Hey, I called 911. I said I wanted to be anonymous."
Right.
And then the detective knocked on my door 10 minutes later, after I said I didn't want, so therefore I'm not calling anymore. My concern is that as this, this is going to be very, if it passes, has the potential to be a very popular program that people need to know that that is a possibility of concern to them. And maybe if there's a way to add some nuance to the registration that says, like, I never want to be knocked, my door knocked on, but maybe, or maybe a way to disclose how they want to be contacted for the footage. That way, it's not really up to the discretion of the detective, but that person is coming forward saying, "This is how I want to be approached with this information."
Yeah, no, definitely hear you, and that sounds like a good requirement to think about in terms of moving forward, regardless, notwithstanding this bill, in terms of that type of documentation. Definitely want to hear more about or talk through it more with you just to make sure that we're on the same page with the requirements that you laid out. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not certain who would be best to answer this question, but I think it was said earlier that a participant in this program doesn't, there's not a requirement that they share the footage with the Police Department. If that's the case, can the footage be subpoenaed?
I do believe that it can, but I will get clarification on that since I'm not an attorney or a detective. So I will get clarification of that, but I do believe in that.
Is that the case for any cameras right now?
So again, I'm not, so I have no subject matter expertise on kind of the legal parameters on that, so I'll get clarification on that.
Yeah, if you can get that back to the committee, so we...
Yes, sir.
And, and I guess, I mean, I'm not certain if you can answer this as well. If an individual is called, if someone's footage is either given voluntarily or subpoenaed, do they have to come in and testify to the fact that it is their footage and it was not filmed by any other source?
So you want to come up? Oh, okay. Got you, thank you. The Law Department's going to provide an answer about subpoenas for cameras, and then also if being a participant in the program changes anything on that. You have another question?
Yeah, if I might, and this is directed to Director of Finance, I guess, but Bob, if you can answer. So it leaves it up to the discretion for the Director of Finance to determine the priority as it relates to the location, well, the applicants for the rebate. Have, I guess, you all started thinking about, you know, how that process would look, how you would determine, you know, which areas are the most violent, which, you know, incidents of violence, you know, warrant? Because this, I mean, this is a great opportunity. It's a great, I would imagine that, you know, once June kicks in, there's going to be a lot of applicants for this. And so you're going to be, have to have a process in place to really determine, you know, where these rebates are going to go because we don't have, you know, unlimited resources. So just curious about how, you know, the thought process to determine. Because I can think of sections in my district where we could use the entire rebate.
Yeah, so in our bill report, we had said that function should, we would defer to either MOCJ or Police to explain what the process would be. We would not be best suited to kind of receive all the applications and make those decisions. We would just be producing the check of the rebate once the, once we got the confirmation that everything was received. I can defer to Sonny on that one.
So I would just say, we have a nearby neighbor that has a very similar program in Washington DC. So we would probably look to the Washington DC model to kind of look at that criteria, ensure it's kind of in line with what we have. I think the DC program has a budgeted amount. We've been in conversations with their team there to learn about kind of that prioritization. But we absolutely can kind of come back with more information on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Costello?
Have we reached out to any of the security companies? I think DC maybe partners with Ring, or other cities do partner with other security companies. Have we already had a conversation or started a conversation with these vendors to see if they would, some provide a certain amount, and then their city provides the other amount? Have we already started that conversation or started targeting some companies to do so?
Go ahead.
Councilwoman McCray, great question. Yes, we have. So I've been in discussions with Ring for about a year now. They originally did a program that was kind of triggered by a community president in Federal Hill South. They ended up extending that discount, which I think was, I want to say like 20%, so plus or minus $40 on a 200. which I think was, I want to say like 20%, so plus or minus $40 on a $200 camera to all residents of 21230. So that would be South Baltimore Peninsula, and originally St. Light in my district, Pig Town, Cherry Hill, Curtis Bay, Brooklyn, Westport, Lakeland, Mount Linens in the 10th District and Councilman Risinghurst District. So they have expressed interest and a willingness to work with the city and to supplement this, because we know that these cameras in some cases can be over $150. Sometimes they go up to $200 depending on which model you get, whether or not you're buying a specific exterior model that's weather resistant, et cetera. So that option is there. I plan to continue to have those conversations. We'll be reaching out to Nest, and my hope is that because Ring has expressed an interest in this, if and when we pass legislation on this, I think that's going to send a strong message to the private security camera operators that there is going to be an influx of purchases in Baltimore City, which will hopefully set up some type of competitiveness between those different manufacturers in terms of what they're willing to offer specifically to Baltimore City purchasers.
Thank you. I just got, I got one more question. I got one more question. My concern, I want to piggyback on something he said earlier. My concern is the money. We do have Kerwin in front of us. We got youth workers who are coming in here who we may not be able to fully fund. And I want to make sure, I like that he asked about the grant opportunities, but I want to make sure that we can pay for this. When we're talking about installing cameras, we are not just talking about the camera. We are talking about the installation. We are making sure, they have to make sure that they have a internet connection that can handle these cameras. And I also want to make sure that certain neighborhoods are not being left out of this process as well. So just know those are my concerns going into this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you. So it was the money piece as well, and I just wanted to note to Bob, how much money do you think we need to set aside for this program?
So I would say it's too early to tell. I think it depends, like Sonny had said earlier, we'd want to pick, you know, some process to have a pilot to make sure that we can manage this and do it right. I mean, the cost, it's, you know, the math is, you know, if it's a thousand cameras, that's, that's $150,000. So you can kind of just, you know, do the math from there, and it just depends on what the take-up is. So that's why our preference, like we said in the response, would be, you know, to do something small first to make sure we can figure it out. And then from there, yeah, if we're going to expand it, that has to be considered among all that, you know, myriad of other priorities that we're going to have in future years, including Kerwin. I'm glad you brought that up, because I think, you know, we still, people forget about that. We're being told next year that the cost could be over $100 million in the first year, so we have to keep that in mind. So that's why, again, the preference would be pilot it, and then it would have to compete against other priorities. But if there is grant funding, that could be money right off the bat that we could use to expand it.
The other part of the question for me is when we talk about our neighbors in East and West Baltimore, I'm just curious to, is the only way that you'll be able to fill out this application, is it going to, is it only going to be online? Like, how will people be able to access this application?
I would imagine that would be determined during promulgation rules and regulations, and that there would be a hard copy as well as an online version of it.
So that's what...
But I defer to the mayor's office and/or finance.
Because I'm curious if it, some of my neighbors don't have the internet, and, you know, they will have to go down to the library to print something out. So that means it would take a little longer for snail mail. And so would they automatically be x-ed out because, hey, it just, it's just going to take my application 20 more days for, for me to get it in versus someone who lives in, I don't know, somewhere who has internet access can hit submit in seconds. So I just want to make sure we're thinking about those folks as well. So I don't know if it splits down the middle, or, you know, I'm just curious. And I know we're going to target certain areas for who needed it, but again...
No, I think that's a really great flag. I mean, I think that speaks to kind of sequencing this a little bit, right? So that it's, we're considering all applications that have been received by X date equally, then we'll do another sequen, you know, I think there are ways to set it up so that it's not just kind of first come, first served. You know, we're kind of marking off, and I'm pulling numbers out of thin air here, so this is not, you know, set in stone, but we'll, we'll do the first kind of $25,000 and review the applications on X date, then we'll have, you know, I think there are ways we can set it up. But to your point, I think also leveraging kind of some of our community centers and working actually with, with you all to make sure that it's not just accessible online, but that we have the, the registration process and rules and forms at community meetings and at our police districts and different places throughout the city to make it as accessible as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Burnett?
That was one of my questions. Technical question or two related to the properties themselves. Do you have to be the property owner to register the camera?
No.
No? Okay. And is there, this is just from a cost perspective lens, is there, and this may be for the bill sponsor, is there a reason to include businesses in this rebate program? I mean, I totally get the, you know, I think about like small stretches of Irvington that the business owners may struggle to purchase security cameras, and they may have one or two employees, but I maybe consider some nuance there. I mean, I don't think, you know, a Walmart or a Target needs any help purchasing a camera, but under, as currently written, they would, or some, any other larger employer, not to pick on those two, but large employers may have revenue to, to do this, but as currently written, at least my interpretation, it sounds like they can reply for a rebate too. And I think from a cost saving perspective, maybe there's some room for nuance there on the number of employees or revenue, that kind of thing.
It's a great, great question. Or, may I, Chairman?
Go ahead.
It's a great question, Councilman Burnett. So for large retailers, let's say a Target, a grocery store, a Walmart, et cetera, there, I don't see a scenario in which they're going to be opting into this program. One, the cost of having someone go through all the legwork to do this isn't going to make sense for them. And two, they're already going to have the cameras that they've determined that they need. And in most instances, those cameras probably have more to do with protection against theft in the store versus capturing crimes that may occur outside. For our, our business Main Street areas, and I'll give you four great examples in, in my district that I think you're probably familiar with. We have essentially four main business corridors outside of the central business district, of course. So you've got Federal Hill Main Street, you've got North Charles Street corridor in Mount Vernon, you've got Market Center around Lexington Market, and you've got Pennsylvania Avenue Main Street. And those four neighborhoods are very diverse and very different from each other, if you will. But one of the things that all of those areas have in common is that there's a high density of small local businesses that are ground floor retail. There is also a much larger volume of people that are walking up and down those streets, and those streets are more prone to crime than areas that are, that have a smaller volume of people. And those areas also tend to be, for the most part, transit oriented development. So they're near, in the, in the case of Lexington Market and on Pennsylvania Avenue, you've got MTA Bus Lines, Lexington Market, you've got the light rail a block away, and you have the metro subway locations, so being transit hubs. Anyway, all of those things considered, I think that there is a reasonable justification for some of our small businesses
Yeah.
to utilize it. But it's, it's a great point, Councilman. Thank you.
And I have two more, Chairman, unless someone else has any.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to, I think, just something to look at there. Two, for the police department, are the locations of the cameras, I know that there's, you've done your best to maintain people's privacy, are the locations of the current registry accessible via Public Information Act request?
It's a small department question.
Repeat the question, please.
She wants you to repeat the question.
Are the current location of registered cameras in the existing registry accessible to Public Information Act request?
Your microphone, your microphone's on.
So the Public Information Act only applies to things that are recorded on paper or, or, you know, in a form that's accessible. So it would be available to the extent that there was a list or some other already compiled, you know, repository of this information that was, you know, tangible, I guess is the right word. So if you're not required to put it together, in other words, for, for a Public Information Act request. If it's there, and there might be information that would be redactable, we'd have to review what, what, you know, was composed of, what list was composed of. And without seeing it, you know, I can't give an opinion on that, but...
Yeah, I think it's something we should think through. Again, especially with the Councilwoman's needs point about a paper application. If that would, sort of thing would apply, then again, there's, I would be concerned about the safety of residents or participating in the program.
We would probably have to redact any identifying information.
Okay, no, that's good to know. And then last question, does the police department currently have any partnerships with Ring or Clear, is it called ClearView AI?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will say that I am generally supportive of this approach, certainly more so than the Eye in the Sky program. We have seen in southeast Baltimore, personal home cameras be used in a number of cases, as my colleague in the 11th District mentioned. And we actually run a public safety task force. It's all of our neighborhoods working together. Arch has, as Councilman Costello mentioned, really taken the lead on this project, but so have a great number of our residents, and we've seen some real success, both in apprehension, in prosecution, in the camera footage being used to make cases. So I will say generally I'm supportive. I would like to see a real effort from MOCJ, the mayor's office, to consider ways to pay for it so that it does not tax our general fund. I also have something of an equity concern, which is that $150 is not the same to you as it is to me, as it is to someone else, right? We know that we're in a city that is heavily segregated by both race and class, and have we, should we consider that perhaps while $150 may support cameras in some of our neighborhoods, that it actually wouldn't be enough to reach into our more struggling disadvantaged neighborhoods? So should there be a tiered approach to this?
Question for me specifically.
Hey, go ahead, Sonny.
Yeah, I think that's a really interesting question. You know, I, you know, don't feel fully equipped to, to give a precise answer right now, but, you know, I think working with Councilman Costello, you know, we've, we've been kind of trying to take a look at some of the models from other cities. But I think, you know, we can, we can take a look at if there are other examples of, of tiered models. You know, for example, to be able to ensure that you have kind of the, the proper internet setup for a camera, things like that. So we can certainly get into, look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, I would just say I think $150, while it may be enough for many neighborhoods, may not be for others. And again, would really hope that you would lead on the grant process and that MOCJ would aggressively push to have this be funded and not end up a liability on the city.
Definitely. Thank you.
Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Cohen, that's a great point. There are models that are available on the market for under $150. So presumably the rebate would cover the entire cost. And the discussion around including a voucher, I think would adequately address your concern. I, I would have concerns with a, with a tiered model, just in terms of the complication of administering that and how complex that would be. But I think that, you know, first and foremost, ensuring that every one of the city has access to that takes care of, of kind of the primary concern. If that, does that make sense?
Is there anybody from the public that would like to come testify? Nobody signed up, but just wanted to double check. Anybody? Going once, twice? Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Councilwoman McCray.
Are we going to have any recourse for, say, someone who gets a camera and then the police identifies the location, goes to them and say, "Hey, do you have any video?" And they say, "No, we're not going to provide anything." Are they still going to be a part of this program? Because I feel like if that's the case, then maybe we just lost $150 or $200, whatever we're going to be giving away. So is there going to be any recourse to maybe get this money back?
So, Councilwoman McCray, also a good question. So the idea here is that this is voluntary, and the thought is that those individuals that are willing to purchase the camera are looking to be a part of the solution in terms of public safety, so that if there is an incident that's caught on their camera, a reasonable person would conclude that they would be more likely than not to provide that footage to the police department. That being said, while we're going to get an answer from Elena at the Law Department on whether or not this footage can be subpoenaed, there should be no consequences to not providing this footage to the police department. The police department would not have any statutory authority to retrieve that footage. That can only come from a court. So you, so individually, you could choose not to give that footage. I don't know for what purpose one would, and, and I'm not, please don't take offense to this comment. This is certainly not directed at you or your question, Councilwoman. I don't know under what scenario a person would want one of these cameras pointed at their public right of way if they weren't prepared to contribute that footage to the police department, if that makes sense.
Respectfully, the public, the public right of way can also include a portion of your property that you're trying to monitor as well. So I just want to know, is it, can we get any of this money back if they decline to be a part of an investigation?
So the...
If, could I add one more quick thing, Councilman?
I'll defer to you, Sonny.
Sorry. The, the other thing that's, that's valuable with cameras is their deterrent effect. So in addition to, you know, retrieving footage, there's also kind of that, the added, if you see one of the, you know, it's kind of like the, the idea of like people putting the signs for different security companies in front of their houses. There's a somewhat similar deterrent effect for cameras, and that kind of adds a layer of community safety. And I think our other concern would be with, with like having a, a course of action if they, they didn't provide footage is, you know, if for some reason the camera was down, you know, the power was out, something like that. We, I don't know that we would have a way to validate if the person was choosing not to give us the footage versus there was some reason why the camera was inoperable at the time of the incident. So I think, you know, we, we were trying to be a little cautious in terms of the, the burden on, on that person to kind of validate their reason.
All right, we're going to be in recesses for the next five minutes before we'll start the, the next hearing.